I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing we do is approve the agenda. Little change in the agenda, we're going to move item three up to in front of it one, so that will be like A, and then we'll proceed down the rest of the agenda as noted. Anything else? Anyone wants to add or change to the agenda? Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. There's no other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. First thing is, Jim, are you going to handle this, or Deb, or here in the chambers request?
I'll introduce it, and then I'll let Police Chief Harris add his recommendation, or actually with him. General background, we received a request from the Chamber of Commerce, Ed Klosik, Executive Director, imparting the possibility of trying to extend the hours on the Saturday night of our annual Fall Do-We-Do Festival. That on that Saturday night, they'd like to extend the food vendor hours for them to be able to stay open until 7:00 PM without necessarily changing any of the other conditions that the Council approved back in March, when you approved requests from the Chamber. In light of the fact that that was different and not included in the original materials that came, I asked Jim to get together with Debbie upon his return, and so they got this morning, and so he's got the recommendation for tonight, and we can stand for any questions.
Okay. Honorable Mayor and Council, I did speak with Debbie earlier today. Her only request was just to extend the food stands to allow them to stay open until 7:00 PM, and that would not affect, like Mike indicated, the time of the, their beer garden closing at 5:00, and then public drinking ceasing at 6:00. Debbie was just looking for an opportunity for some of the ballplayers to be able to come downtown and be able to get some food from some of the vendors yet, so she wanted to extend that. I don't think that'll have an issue with, even when the ballplayers are coming down, we have officers out on the street, we usually just make contact with them and say, hey, there's no more drinking in public after 6:00, so they usually take care of that on their way downtown, so I don't see that as a big issue or concern.
Okay, so you'll just handle the additional hour for the food vendors as normal when people are coming from 5:00 to 6:00 downtown with...
Yeah, yeah, and once, well, once the, once 6 o'clock, we may talk to them about, hey, there is no more public drinking, so if you want to get some food again, you can then go into a bar or someplace, which is usually their direction that they're heading anyways.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so I guess I'll make a motion to approve the extending the hour to 7:00, and just hope that it's easier for your people to be able to monitor drinking, because I think that could be a concern because of that, but...
Yeah, in my discussion with Deb, we said, hey, we'll try it this year, see how it goes, and we can make changes for next year.
Okay, so I got a motion.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Thanks, James. Next, Ken, I think you've got the next two.
I do. We'll start off with a request, V3-2018, and this is a request by Darcy Cosmoncker, and she is looking for a fence variance. This is basically along her backyard, rear property line along Sixth Street Northwest and Rainbow Street, and it's developed. Here's an overhead view of her property, so you can see, she takes her access, and the house is actually new enough that it did not show up on the air, so you also do want to point that out, it is sort of being constructed. But Sixth Street Northwest is the collector all that abuts her property on the rear, and she's actually the first home on that block requesting a fence of any kind, and specifically looking for a six-foot-tall privacy fence to extend to her rear lot line, which does not meet the ordinance requirement, as we've talked with a couple other fence variances we've had in the past couple of months. Anytime a property abuts a road, whether it be on the front or rear, there's a 30-foot setback from that property line that abuts a road to where the fence cannot exceed a four-foot height limit. So basically, she's seeking an area that would lower the fence in at the six-foot-tall privacy fence, a larger area in her backyard, and I'll show you the next exhibit here as we move forward. Basically, the reason she gave for her request for this fence is for security, for her pets, privacy for herself and her pets that she has, and also to reduce noise pollution. It is basically a six-foot-tall wooden privacy fence. If you've driven and associated, she has the fence constructed at the 30-foot setback line up to the six-foot height, and then had, she basically at that point stopped the construction of the fence in order, thought it looked unusual to stop at that point, so she had come in and asked for a fence variance, and that's where the fence has been since that time. So if you've driven by, you've seen the ending point of the 30-foot setback, so if the variance were not approved, that's all a part of that fence, it goes back to you. You can actually see in the photos a little bit, too. So the Planning Commission did review the request on June 27th. The only comment we received at the meeting was from the applicant, who again reiterated that the fence was more than anything for the safety of her pets in the backyard of her home. One thing that I'll just point out, Sixth Street Northwest is a collector road. Obviously, today with Rainbow Street Development not fully developed, doesn't have the traffic council that it will have in the future, but it is a more major roadway, there was no local access allowed out that road, so maybe not on the same level as Corner of 29 and the other variances we've approved and passed, but nonetheless, is a busier road than normal and will be even busier in the future, so I do want to point that out as well. So here's the exhibit that basically shows the backyard. So in red is where she would like to have the fence go, all the way around her rear lot line, and still provides for 14 feet from basically her property line to the back of the curb, and that's the boulevard area. So you still have the 14-foot boulevard area there. There's no future trail or sidewalk proposed in that area. Right now, she has her fence stopping at the 30-foot setback line, which is shown in green here, so you want to put that additional 14 feet, and then another 14 feet to the back of the curb, so you've got 44 feet that she doesn't have fenced in at this point, and she would like to have that fenced into that area. I do want to point out, we did add, one other comment submitted via email from a neighboring resident that supported her fence variance request and supported the privacy, and requested that the fence be allowed as close to her property line as we would allow that to be. And basically, that would put it right into her lot line if granted, based on what she's requesting here. So here's a couple of pictures I didn't get out there after she had the site completed, but that is ending again at the 30-foot setback for her rear lot line, so good chunky yard left there that would not be fenced in at the six-foot height if left there today. One more photo here, again, you can see the neighbor to the west side there does have a shed in the backyard that presents further out than the fence, so ultimately, the staff and the Planning Commission with a five to zero vote, there being the point seven, did recommend approval of the variance and the resolution in your packet supports the findings that they developed at the meeting. And I don't seem to have any to answer, but if you have any other questions, I can answer those for you.
So the six-foot height that right now was already in place, that's a six-foot height fence already?
Correct.
So really, the only variance is not, is just the height of the final second segment one? What's that?
It's two-pronged, it's the fence height and the distance from the road line.
Basically, just the height within 30 feet of the road.
Right.
The area you're checking on the overhead.
Yep.
She wants to be allowed to extend that six-foot-tall fence, which ends basically at this point right here, and extend that to her rear lot line.
Okay.
At the six-foot tall. So right now, trying to draw a box around it, this is the area she can't have with the six-foot-tall fence based on current fence ordinance regulations, so she would like to extend it to her lot line.
But that could be four fence, four foot.
It could be four foot.
Right, I mean, yeah, so it's not...
Not that you can't have a fence.
Right, it's not that we're allowing a fence in an area that normally, we just said it to be two feet on.
Two feet on.
Okay, that's all I, clarifying, thanks.
Anyone else have any questions for Ken on this variance?
What happens if you wanted to put a trail through there or something, that'll linger there?
You know, I just pointed that out because as a matter of visual aesthetic, where we had, on the corner of 29, we had a trail there, that kind of broke up the appearance of the boulevards that look smaller in that area. I just point out that it looked like quite an expanse without a trail or anything in there, just putting it more of an aesthetic view of that. Sidewalk's actually planned on the north side of the road in the future, so nothing more than...
Well, even a sidewalk on 14-foot segment would be...
It's quite a way of...
Yeah.
Yeah, there's plenty of buffer there that would be a concern for me, certainly.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the variance.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Maggie Bass, second by Sean Ryan. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Variance number two.
So variance number two is variance V4-2018. And this is actually, so three different variances, if you break it down individually. So you have wetland setback to a pool with associated deck potentially, a shed that they propose to have some pool equipment, and then the other variances unrelated to the wetland setback is a fence setback adjacent to the trail that runs along Tenth Avenue Southeast. And the applicants are Greg and Jane Kemper, and we do have Jane Kemper in the audience who tonight should have the questions for her. So here's the site map overview, generally vicinity of the property. So this property is located in the corner of Tenth Avenue Southeast, which is a major cluttered road and a significant amount of traffic, I point out just as a reference to the fence. You can see, it's just a cul-de-sac road that enters in on Tenth Avenue there, so some other homes in the neighborhood to the south have another home with a pool there, other homes with various sheds and different things, but I'll kind of point out how this property is a little different than those other properties as it relates to the wetland that exists in the backyard of the home. A little better zoom in of the property, you can take a look at the overhead air photo here, you can actually see some vegetation, natural vegetation on the air photo here, and that is actually delineated wetland from when this property was initially developed back in 2004, 2005 timeframe. Does not look like a wetland outwardly, but it is, was delineated that way, basically some soil types and different things led it to be classified that way. I see the actual open water well off the property, but nonetheless, still qualified as a wetland. So again, Greg and Jane are seeking the wetland setback, so normally, there's a 50-foot wetland setback, any structure, and what they're seeking in their backyard is to construct an above-ground pool with an associated deck, and that may or may not happen, but asking for it in case they do want to construct that, as well as a small storage shed, again, all within that 50-foot setback that is normally required. They also seek that variance for that fence to be located along the property line of Tenth Avenue Southeast, and they would request that to be less than two feet from the edge of the trail that exists there today. Basically, they're asking for that because their fence was installed before a current two-foot setback, before a fence from a trail existed, and they just simply extend that without a jog in it, to kind of keep the aesthetic. We haven't had any issues maintaining the trail with the fence at the one foot currently, and one condition you'll see as we come into it was a condition that was added for the recommendation of the Planning Commission, that if that fence variance for the fences is allowed to be approved, that the applicant is responsible for any damage and repair to that fence, shouldn't be damaged. I mean, that hasn't happened yet, but that's one thing we don't want to be liable for, that's why we've put in the two-foot setback in place. So that was one condition that was added to that variance that is directly available to the variance, we are able to add that condition for that variance. Just finding out, we'll point out on the overhead here in a minute, but the wetland setback to the structures basically precludes the entire use of the backyard for any structures, and I'll point out exactly where that setback goes here in a couple seconds. But ultimately, the Planning Commission did review at the June 27th meeting, we had only comments again received from Ms. Kemper that's here in the audience tonight, and she had submitted a letter of practical difficulty in the packet, I won't read through that here tonight, but basically provided all of her comments in that letter, so if you have any questions, Jane can provide more feedback on that. Here's the best exhibit I can show you, and also show this overlaid on an air photo, give you a little better real-world look at how that plays out, so if you look at the property today, what looks to me, the rear lot line is actually kind of a wetland edge, and then just kind of overgrown shrubs, maybe some small trees, et cetera, but the property actually starts another 14 feet, kind of the southwest of that, I guess we'll say. One of the photos here, I'll point out, we have a city property marker that actually denotes where that is, but you gotta go another 14 feet north to actually get to the edge of that wetland. You may ask, where did the suggestion to be 14 feet from that wetland edge come from? And that basically came from a variance that was issued up on Seventh Street Northeast a couple years ago by the Council. We had a very similar situation where that lot could not build a home on that lot due to the wetland setback, there's a 50-foot wetland setback there as well, similar situation that was called a lower quality wetland, and outwardly appeared, looked like the wetland had function as a wetland, but it had been delineated that way a number of years ago, and what was deemed appropriate was a 14-foot setback. Now, talking to the city engineer about, you know, what wetland setbacks and offer are normally meant for, it's sort of meant to come for the high water table, adjusting up and down, and it's most important for habitable structures, where you have, you know, a home or a basement of a home within that 50 feet. And talking to him specifically about this, when you have an above-ground pool, you don't have anything below that water table necessarily, you might for the deck puddings, but again, it's not a habitable structure, so you're not damaging any, you know, environmental function of the wetland by having a non-habitable structure in that area, and a shed as well, it's just a shed that sits on skids, but 14-foot has precedence in similar wetland, different part of town obviously, but where that wetland edge had been established a number of years ago, and basically precluded any of it being built. In the case of this, you can see the wetland setback is actually this green line, and that's the 50-foot line from the edge of the wetland, so pretty much put along, anything can be done in the backyard. You'll notice there was a playground structure in the backyard, we don't consider those to be a structure, even though it's within that setback area, but quite honestly, again, that's sitting above the surface of the earth, so we don't have any concerns from a buildability standpoint in that area, and again, the quality of the wetland is not, it's not your typical open water wetland as you normally would envision, I guess is the best way to put that, it's kind of an overgrown area of some soil types that lend itself to a wetland. So that's where they're proposing the pool, up to deck is added, it would be outside of that recommended 14-foot minimum, just be on the north side, and maybe the east and west sides of the pool. Then again, the shed would just be placed generally behind the pool away from Tenth Avenue. As far as the fence, the purple drawing, the line of the squares is the distinct fence of the one that's setback from the trail, and they would like to extend that basically up to, but not into the required site triangle, so that you're not blocking view of traffic trying to enter or exit Ninth Street course Southeast. So the fence would not extend into that area, it would just run up to that. If you've been by there, you see some bushes planted in general vicinity, that's where the fence would be proposed, and again, the variance request, if they not have to jog the fence away from the trail an additional foot, to keep that continuity and that visual of that white vinyl fence that's sitting.
What's the height of that fence?
Four foot, I believe. And they're not looking to have that be any taller. So that would be the variance request, and that's on one page, and here's how that overlays on the air photo, so you, it's a little hard to see, but you can see the vegetation in the darker area, under that wetland area, so again, not your typical open water wetland, but vegetation engrossed in that area, so that's where that 14-foot setback starts, so almost 28 feet from your lot line. So not a significant amount of setback from the rear lot line till you can get to that pool, almost 28 dirt feet. And then, I'm also pointing out in here, there's the wetland setback, and then there's a 40-foot buffer that goes along with that, too. Again, the buffers, the high water table, situation moving up and down, more again to protect your habitable structures than anything. We don't have fluctuating water levels here, like the US and lines and things.
Okay, any other...
Photos here, a couple of photos here, before I put, say, just point out a couple things, so again, generally, the area where you're seeing the trampoline is where the above-ground pool would go, so it gives you kind of a visual as far as that goes. Here's the actual property line marker for the city's property, it's about 14 feet, they actually get to the, where the wetland would end, and so kind of draw a straight line back to the west, to the other property, and that's where you have the wetland. And then, just finally, the fence, so here it is at one foot setback, and you can see it's standing up to, not into the site triangle at that one foot setback. So again, yeah, and Planning Commission did recommend, a five to zero vote to recommend approval with the resolution drafted in your packet with that condition on this claim that the Alcatel would be responsible for damage to the fence should that occur due to plumbing or any other maintenance we would be doing on a fence adjacent to the trail. Sorry, go ahead, just...
So they're proposing to put a fence around the whole property?
No, that was, that's kind of a separate issue, the fence itself is just more of an aesthetic thing to provide...
Privacy on...
Privacy from Tenth Avenue.
So they just want to extend that fence to that point, and then there's not, they're not looking to put a fence on the other...
Nope.
...two sides?
Nope. But I don't know if we've talked about this too much, but if you have an above-ground pool, and you have the sides at least four foot tall, you're not required to have a fence, what you have is to have a removable ladder that can be taken out when the pool's not in use, or if they have a deck, have to lock, have a lockhole four-foot tall gate on the bottom of the entrance to the deck, so yeah, they're not required to have a fence around the entire perimeter. Would have been an option, but with the above-ground pool, you can have the removable ladder.
Okay.
Ken, I have a question. Basically, when this was planted, the wetland was already there.
Correct.
With the wetland basically taking out all their backyard, why was that lot approved?
So that was a question I actually had for the city attorney on, should we be allowing the variance with that being a known condition and then obviously being as it laid out? And basically, he said that the existence of the wetland does not preclude the variance from being issued because it still provides a hardship particular to that lot. Now, it met all other criteria for lot depth, lot with minimum lot size. So that was my ultimate, that was my first question to the attorney, can we grant a variance for that? And he said, yes, it's unique to that lot and that specific area. I was going, well, we still, we approved it, and going into it, people should know that that's a setback, that it would preclude them from building there, and he said, oh, still makes it a unique situation that all their lots in that development don't have to deal with. So that was ultimately the practical difficulty specific to that lot.
Maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying, or you didn't understand what I said, but when the developer came around asking for lots, why did the city allow that particular lot to be approved?
It still met the minimum lot size, width, and depth to build a house.
Build a house, but it doesn't...
It doesn't contain any consideration on usability of the backyard, you are correct on that, but that, that's kind of the key point of the attorney saying, it still does not preclude somebody from asking for a variance from your normal setbacks, even though that's how it was planted, that doesn't preclude them from requesting that or having it granted. Seems a little unusual, and it is a specific question that, a discussion I had with Scott, actually a couple years ago, when the Kemper's actually initially even acquired about this, because I was trying to, well, that wetland's always been there, have anybody coming in should know that you can't outwardly just by right build in that area, to know that's not really the standard for variances. It was back before the statute changed to, but now it's just a simple practical difficulty standard to do that, which is not, not difficult approval like it had been.
Is that guy growing out, or...
That was.
Figures. He didn't say that.
And it is a unique lot, there's no other lot that would run in that vicinity.
And I assume that that particular piece of wetland doesn't have any environmental protections, or...
Nope. Nope, actually checked with our wetland specialist as well, Derek Deichel of SEH, and indicated, he actually indicated, the other route the Alcatel could have taken, it would have been vastly more expensive is to redeline the wetland, they're really only good, as far as plating is concerned, they're only good for five years, so it could have been redelineated, it may have showed that that wetland has shifted away from the property, but three grand versus $300, not a tough decision to make, they're just going to vary for a little.
No, I have no problem with the request that the Kemper's are making, it's reasonable, and it's reasonable.
No, I remember when it got planted, it's like, really nothing to do in the backyard. This is one of the first plats I, I didn't directly review when I worked for the city, but I remember when it came through review, and it was like, there's no outward ordinance allowing use of that backyard.
It just reminds me of kind of what's happening now on Long First Avenue Southeast, on the west side around the 6, 700 block. You got that big wetland back there.
Oh.
We had a big issue with one of those corner lots, six, seven years ago.
Nope. Didn't remember that.
Any other questions or comments?
I do. Make a motion to approve the variance.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean Ryan, selected by Maggie Bass. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Okay, Mike, fire relief.
Yes!
Some of us have told her we're kind of tough up here.
Kids were up there.
Oh, okay, kids, kids can't wait to go swimming, huh?
The short answer is, there's no required contribution for plumbing.
You're welcome.
And it's not likely that they will be coming in to ask for any pension benefit change this year.
Okay. You want to have any questions? I don't know if Maggie, is this the first time you've been through this?
This is the first time, yes.
Maybe you wanted us to explain a little bit to her, so that...
But the New Prague Fire Relief Association's requirements...
What the New Prague Fire Relief Association's required to do is annually, typically sometime after the 1st of July, and typically before August 1st, because I'm required to present this to the council as soon as I effectively receive it. And what it is, is it's information from them, and it's specifically what they call Form SC-18, statutory state reporting requirement for the relief pension fund, where they give us information on the status of the fire pension fund, or the contributions that are due and owed to be paid out if there are any, some are deferred because, in order to receive a pension, the full pension is, an individual has to have 20 years of service as a volunteer fireman and reach the age of 50. However, they can get a pro-rata share if they are a fireman, standing for the, for at least 10 years. And in between 10 years and 20 years, should they retire, it's a pro-rata contribution, but they're not eligible to receive the funds that are set aside for their, their pension until they reach age 50. Historically and annually, as you can see, going to almost the second to last page, the pension contribution that is made by the city is that for every volunteer fireman that we have, there is a benefit of $3,750 per year, that is what their identifiable pension would be. Even if that number changes during the course of their time as a volunteer fireman, assuming they're there 20 years, if and when they retire, the pension amount that they are to be paid for those 20 years of service is the last pension benefit amount that has been approved by both the Fire Relief Association and the City Council. And so in that, as they go through this calculation, and I'll show you, is that the current benefits do and owe the volunteer firemen ultimately in the future, and we get to see annually the status of how their pension fund is doing, they take ownership and the responsibility to invest that in the efforts to, to grow it. It took a bit of a hit back, and I believe it was, what, 2008, if memory serves, if I'm correct, 2008, I'm in the timeframe, I think it dropped in value by about a third. And so when you calculate what the pension contribution was that the city is required to address long-term, is that it resulted in a fairly strong increase in the contribution amount that the city had to put into that fund and help essentially grow it back to an appropriate level. Now, though, that period of those five years ended in 2014, and now for 15, 17, 18, and 19, there is no required contribution. The city has only historically contributed at the level and the amount as determined through the preparation of this report. And so if you go to, let's just kind of walk through it, page one is the listing of the 30 current firefighters, and if you calculate that pension amount as of the end of 2018, and looking ahead to 2019, you can see where that change goes on an annualized basis. So then we start to take a look at it, that what we have, I believe, five firemen that have separated from their volunteer service. And if they had service in excess of 10 years, then there's a dollar amount that is reserved and set aside or deferred for their pension contribution amount. Again, like I said, they can't access that until they turn age 50. So then, as you continue into, that's shown on pages 2, A, B, and C, nothing on page 3, but it's just part of the report that goes out. And then you get into the financial projections that are shown up at the top, as far as the active liabilities for the active members and the deferred members. Up on line A, you can see that that ultimately changes annually. And so this year, in the normal cost cell B minus A, that cost is going up by about $106,000. The assets in their fire relief pension fund that we have, I don't think I have a copy of the 2017 audit yet, but it should be forthcoming, shows that they have assets of a little over $929,000. Then they take a look at what is the projected income for 2018, because we're trying to forecast ahead a little bit in here. The contribution that we get from the state of Minnesota for fire state aid and supplemental aid is a little over $82,000. And then their forecasting or expecting interest derivatives to grow by about 30, and some appreciation of the fund to about $16,000, providing total income for 2018 estimated at almost $129,000. So when you add that to what their year-end 2017, December 31st of 17, they have an estimated assets at the end of the year of about $1,058,000. Then you subtract what the accrued liability is projected at year-end for 2018, a 1.14 million. It shows that they technically have a deficit at the present time of about $83,000, or they're almost funded at about 93%.
Okay, thank you.
So Mike, why don't, why don't we have to bring it up to 93% funded?
I don't, I can't answer that. It's not required to, because not everybody's going to retire right now and immediately, and it'll go up and down based on when and if some of those guys reach retirement age and will pay out that, or as it continues to grow. Part of it is all based on the fluctuation, nobody can fully comprehend and predict what is that fund going to do going forward. So we don't know that, A, it won't increase in value, or B, the revenues that come in are or are not sufficient to generally keep up with the rate of growth on that, or at some point, depending upon where that mix goes, and/or depending, third, on what the council and the fire department agree on as to a change in the pension contribution amount, is all of those are changing annually. And so it's kind of always in a, in a dynamic state, but that's where it's critical to point out and to show you where is it generally at, and you can see with 30 firemen at the current pension amount, where that number is inching upward. And so you want to make sure that as you look at it, at least before you would agree to any pension contribution change, what the last page is showing you as far as, under the state statute, the maximum of some benefit level as to what it could be, based on the calculations, would be by $4,900 and by $3,750. So there is some likely room for growth, but it just depends on, and when we dealt with that request typically on every other year basis, we've gone through the formula and the calculation sheets, and played with different amounts that have been under discussion to see what that fiscal impact is. The hard part being is, in today's times, just where is the pension fund going to grow to, and how much annually, and, you know, with that cost, and are the firemen going to reach that 10 years? If they don't reach 10 years of employment with us, then they do not, or are not entitled to hear any, any compensation. So you end up having some of that left over that could be used in the future, and it's part of the fund, so to speak. So, there's a lot of variables that can change, and so the only thing that I can point out to you is that, as you take a look at this and understand that, when and if that request comes to talk about it, is that you're able to look at that and see what does it fiscally do, and where we add, and where are things generally trending, and how does that look? Because, as you saw on those sheets, that we got hit somewhat unexpectedly back in 2010, when we were looking at a contribution that went up from $16,000 to $50,000 a year, and part of it was because of the loss of the fund value. And because that went down and we had liabilities, it required additional contribution by us as the city entity, along with the state monies that we get annually, to help add value back to that pension fund in order to meet those long-term obligations. And so, it's ever evolving and changing on an annualized basis, depending upon which way various factors are trending in the process. And so, I tried to develop this ever since I came, just so the council had a better understanding of, you know, what has been our pension contribution, and where has it been, where is it at, and where is it going at the present time? The other benefit we have is that we've worked with the rural fire association and the township officials, and that whatever our annual contribution is, over the last, I think it was seven years ago approximately, we were able to involve them in agreeing, since we're providing rural fire protection outside of our corporate city boundaries, and that they didn't have a department, and effectively they're working with us, is they ought to share in the contribution to this. And so, we developed a 50-50 contribution, we did a five-year phase, and starting at 20%, 40%, 60%, 80%, got it to 100%. And since it kind of got up to 100%, they go, I haven't contributed anything. So it's kind of been good for both parties, but we were able to get their buy-in and understanding that if they did contract and work with us for firemen, they'd have their own fire pension program that they'd have to deal with. So, it only seemed fair that we share in annual costs on the debt payment for the construction of that building, we share in fireman's costs that are determined when they go out and fight those fires, and then we share the number of operational maintenance expenses as well. This ought to be one that they agreed to participate, and they chose to do it. So, my requirement in coming to you with this information tonight is that you acknowledge that, in case you had to do something from a budgetary standpoint, this is the official notice from the fire relief pension, from the, the fire relief group to the council as to, based on all of the information, is projected for 19, there's no contribution in this one. So then I had to file the, a copy of the report with my signature to the state that lets them know that you have effectively seen it, are aware of it. And the challenge would be, as you can obviously address, looking back in 2010 to 14, is that caused us a bit of a breakup and a challenge to, to go from where it had been the previous years.
And I'm sure David, there's probably some state statute or something that there has to be a certain limit.
Well, they're, they're required on the back page, as you take a look at it again, when, on page 5, they're only, in the accounting in the, in the formula, as far as what's taken into account, running those calculations on page 5, is, when you take a look at the, let's see, they only have to address 10% of the, of the deficit information, $149,000, you know, they set aside 10% of that down there on line 10, in the amortization of that deficit, so they don't have to count for it all at once. So I'd like to tell you that I had some need in figuring this out, that this comes out of the state of Minnesota, that because of how the city, the association adopted a plan and the pension program that they have, this comes out of the office of the state auditor, and you plug in dollar amounts in certain places, and you run the calculations, and here's what it is.
Okay, anyone have, any other questions?
No.
I guess I'll make a motion to accept the, whatever, SE, was it SE?
S.
There you go, SE-18?
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passage 4-0. Next, at the last council meeting, we, we had a resignation by Amy Jurick, and since she had less than two years on her term, it is in our city charter that we can appoint someone to replace that, and the recommendation from our city attorney, he felt that we should appoint someone to fill out the rest of her term, which is ended at December 31st, 2018, or the first meeting in January, when the new council will be sworn in. So at the last meeting, I basically gave everyone a little homework to see if they had some names that would be willing to serve the remainder of the term, and I know Dave and I both talked to, Kaye Wilcox was one that we talked to, and she said that she would be willing to serve. I know that Mike handed us out a kind of a letter and a resume from Amanda Judd, who, I think she serves on the park board?
She does, and I also have Terry Murtaugh, who's on the park board, also is willing.
Okay. And then I also had a email from Matt Goldaby, also said he'd be willing to serve, too. So those are some of the names that we had out there, I don't know, Sean, do you have anyone? No.
And who is Matt?
Matt would be Bruce Wolfe's son-in-law, and he used to work with CSSW, and now I think he's with some, is it Lexington Financial now? He's like a financial advisor.
He's on the planning commission as well.
Yeah.
For quite a few years.
Okay. And he also did indicate he might be interested in running council also there, so, for people who don't know, that there's going to be a mayor, and actually, three council seats up for election this year, so hopefully we get a good response on that part of it. So, any comments regarding any of the names that are out there?
I think Kaye would be great.
Yeah, I would go along with Kaye. She's got the most experience, and for the five months, that experience, I think, will help us.
Yeah, I know, especially during the budget, budget process, you know, this was my first time through, so, second time should be a little easier, but to have someone brand new in that process might be a little difficult.
Right, and It was on the council for 21 years.
Yeah, and I did talk to Kaye, and one of her questions was that, she was wondering if there's any unique stuff that, or surprising issues that, that I felt were coming up, that would might have to be decided. I basically told her I didn't see, I didn't foresee anything, I told her that really the main focus for the next few months are, will be the budgets. And she felt comfortable that, you know, she's well-versed in, in the city budgets and could handle it, so. So if, I guess I'd like to make a recommendation to fill his meeting seat with Kaye Wilcox.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, so, Mike, will you be, do the honor to let Kaye know?
Yeah, and that we'd have her brought to the August meetings where her and officially, second to that.
David.
Kaye.
Okay, moving right along, kind of coinciding with that is, obviously, when Amy left, she served on two boards and commissions, utility commission and the planning commission. Mike did mention that Kaye did serve on the planning commission, so, you know, you know, that would be one that she'd be willing to fill in. I'm willing, I did serve, I also served on the utility commission for a few years, and to fill that void, I'm willing to, to fill that position, if that's okay with everyone in regarding utility commission.
Or maybe Kaye would be.
Yeah, but they have a meeting this, this week, this month, next week, that they have to do some, some decisions on some major things, and Bruce was hoping to have someone in place, so.
And I'm also willing to assist on utility, if you feel that you're overwhelmed with your other committees.
Oh, I'm so overwhelmed now. No, I, I can, I, I'm willing to serve on there, and then, you know, maybe the first week in August, we can evaluate if Kaye wants to, you know, do that. But why don't we, I propose that we'll leave the planning commission open. Cause I, Ken, did you guys have your meeting ready?
Yeah, we don't meet again till the end of August, so, you guys have time.
Yep, and then utility, I know they meet next 23rd, is that Monday?
Yes.
Yes, they have a meeting next Monday that Bruce has to some issues, so, I'm going to make a recommendation that I will fill that opening, and we can re-decide on the planning commission in the August meeting. So I guess that would be my motion?
No, no.
No, I can't, I had a point, someone else asked it, that's right, that's my, I get to a point.
Your recommendation to the council is for yourself.
Yes.
And then they have to add.
But don't jump.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean, second by Maggie, at I got a motion by Sean, second by Maggie, that Chuck will sit in as the utility commission to set out Amy's term. So there's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye in the opposition? Okay, then we'll deal with the planning one in August. So consent agenda. We're almost there, guys.
No worries.
Anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I did real quick, just on the accounts payable to Jim under the police, Hartland Tires, was that for more than one vehicle or that just seemed like?
Two vehicles.
It was two.
Yeah.
And that $1,400 doesn't seem so much. At first I thought that was for four tires.
And I also had just a quick question on sanitary sewer, the softener salt for Ace Hardware and Paint. Is that a typical monthly expenditure or is that something that would allow the ordinary? It's $4,500.
I've seen it that high before.
Okay.
But that's not unusual.
Okay, all right. I just didn't know if.
Well, when you take a shower tomorrow, you'll soften that water.
Oh, really?
Well, that's how they use it.
This is the wastewater plant.
I know, but this is, that's how they, when I lived in Eden Prairie, they actually softened the water.
Some do.
There is central softening.
Yeah. So they said you never had to have a softener in your house.
But we certainly wouldn't soften.
I think she is kidding, buddy. Well, you know, when we discharge those fish, we're going to have nice soft water in the sewer, so we didn't have river. Any other comments? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, hang on. Second by Dave Ruzik. There's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye in the opposition? Okay, now the Ms. Iannus. We have two gentlemen here, Jake Cartack and Adam Gill, who'd like to address the council.
Uh, sir, if I introduce myself, I'm Jake Cartack and this is Adam Gill. We have served as the, or we would like to first thank you guys for bringing us on the agenda, listening to our concerns as well as Police Chief Garres. Adam and I are the co-chairs of the Rick Teets Alumni Softball Tournament on Dozenki Weekend at Memorial Park here in New Prague. We volunteered at the tournament for roughly eight years and have been in charge of the tournament for an incident-free five. All tournament proceeds are given to the city via a cashier's check made out to the city of New Prague, which are then put into a memorial park renovation project fund. Usually each year we produce $5,000 to $7,000. A lot of it is weather dependent, rainy, sunny, you know, stuff like that. And I believe the fund has over $110,000 in it. Adam and I take great pride in organizing and running one of New Prague's staple events on a weekend filled with such great community tradition. We understand the importance of a clean and safely ran tournament to ensure its place on Dozenki Weekend for years to come. Adam and I pride ourselves on being vigilant for both the sale and consumption of alcohol by minors at the park. We felt that after last year's regular tournament workload, along with constantly overseeing alcohol consumption, things may be trending in a bad way. This is not okay with either Adam or myself. We feel the need to get ahead of this problem and be proactive in stopping it before it becomes something that threatens the tournament. Adam and I understand the workload the New Prague Police Department currently has during the weekend, during the weekend-long festivities, and appreciate all they do to monitor an extremely large area. We are currently asking for an officer to be on duty at the field to help us enforce and maintain a role of a safe and fun atmosphere for all the New Prague High School alumni and classmates. We also understand the extra costs involved with an extra officer, but we truly believe it's time to be proactive about a concern before it becomes a problem. So I just wanted to mention that and then I do have a couple of questions afterwards if you guys have any comments or concerns for us.
So obviously the first thing is, and Jim could probably verify this, is that, you know, we're running pretty thin on, you know, as we do hit the county sheriffs on both sides and things like that. So I know that would be, you know, one of the issues. The other issue is, I guess, have you guys thought of other options like making people wear wristbands, things like that? And I know someone still has to monitor that, but it's a lot prevalent if someone, you know, can see someone, you know, from a distance. Again, you know, even if it's volunteer people going and say, hey, you know, dump that out type of thing.
Yeah.
You know, just some of the things that I was thinking about after you and I talked on the phone.
No, absolutely. Chuck and Mayor Nick Glaser. And we've had a lot of discussions with a lot of people and a lot of people have given us good ideas. We haven't discussed the wristbands. We backed away from it mainly because we were concerned about the transferring of wristbands and then potentially a license to do what they want once they have a transferred wristband. If we're not able to monitor that completely, the whole system is broken. You know, you just wouldn't want an undereducated with the wristband on doing everything, you know, and then we'd be right back to where we are. One of the main reasons we're here, Mayor Nick Glaser said, getting volunteers to tell people to dump that out, that's the biggest problem. Last year we were met with foul language, physical threats, just yelling. And it's just, it's too much for us as volunteers to do. We don't have the training and we just, it's beginning to get over our head. It's not there yet, but I want to get on top of it. And so that's why we're just here making you guys aware of some of the things we'd like to see, I guess.
Is there a private security firm that would be able to provide a person?
I wouldn't know. I guess potentially, but we haven't.
You haven't explored that particular avenue?
No.
Okay.
We, we kind of feel, you know, we are part of the Rick Teets Alumni Softball Tournament Committee. There's no, there is no group, there's no paperwork, there's no, all the money goes to the city of New Prague, it doesn't go to anything else, which is kind of what I wanted to talk about as well. When the temporary liquor license goes through, it has my name on it with the organization name being the Rick Teets, well, there is no Rick Teets Alumni Organization, it's me and Adam. We're wondering why that isn't the city, why your name isn't on the liquor license instead of ours?
The city is not the applicant for the two-day temporary on-sale beer permit. It is your organization. And in talking to the city attorney, one of the questions he had is that, and this has been done the same way since before I arrived 10 years ago. And so Mr. Cartack is on top of what has historically been there and what is currently there. And so there was a question raised in my conversation with the city attorney based on a call from the mayor, is taking a look at whether there is a viable organization, nonprofit organization here in the first place. And I don't know that you know that, or I'm not sure I know that based on what's been going on in the past as far as the applicant, which has been various individuals have taken responsibility. And Mr. Cartack has identified the challenge is that whoever applies for a liquor or beer license to be able to serve alcohol under the statutes is responsible 100% for the enforcement of the training and education and consumption. So whether it be a one-day event that the Chamber of Commerce has, whether it's the two-day event that you have, whether it's a church one-day event, or whether it's the bars or liquor establishments that are open near you, whoever is the applicant for the license is responsible 100% for the enforcement of the alcohol issue. And we have certainly had discussions before your arrival today in the past of where is this going? Is there proper controls? Should a beer permit be issued in the first place or not? That you can still have the softball tournament, but a significant share of the proceeds that are ready.
Exist, yeah.
That are set aside for the Rick Teets Memorial and those funds are sitting in a fund and when we ultimately get something built or worked on that way, those funds will go to that. So they are preserved and set aside and we understand what the requirement would be if we didn't believe that there can't be better enforcement, we might have to make a recommendation to the council that we not issue the license. And hopefully we don't get to that at a point that either party is consciously aware that we've reached that threshold. Because individually, and just so you know, as you take a look at it, is it under the statutes because they raise such a small amount of, or the fund that they raised, they are exempt from having to provide us with the financial responsibility that most other liquor licenses that we have that we issue. And they are exempt under the statute. So number one, they don't have any insurance. Your name is on the application and the concerns that you were noting and sharing should be a cause of concern.
Very much.
For you as your.
Volunteer.
I am identifying, which therein lies the challenge of providing, as I said, either beer or alcohol. And there's no other licensee that we have that we don't make those a condition of issuing the license, that they have to do the training and the education and ultimately the enforcement of ensuring that proper age consumption of alcohol is a concern, is occurring. So I don't know that we have a solution in that we don't provide any other law enforcement unless there's an event, Jim, that would be big enough. And I can't think of the last time where there was an event where you.
Well, we have, I mean, at times they'll, they may hire an officer at the city fee schedule, $75 an hour to the city.
But we have not historically provided any level of free law enforcement service to effectively enforce consumption of alcohol.
And that was one thing that I was going to bring up too, that if we had to, I would be fine with paying out of our, or out of the tournament earnings to hire. I know when, when we did have the minor incident last year, we had a police officer, Applin's number, got ahold of him, he just made a walk-through and after that, there was nothing, nothing wrong. Even if you send, if you could send an officer from downtown, walk through the park every hour or every hour and a half.
I do have them rotate through. So I think, I think ultimately you guys have the responsibility because you're putting in for the license.
Right.
But we can work together to have more law enforcement presence there.
Yeah.
Without additional costs right now. Another option may be to have Scott County Reserve, they do card people or they watch for that at other events, Prior Lake Fest or Music Fest, they work that. So I can work to have some of those individuals assigned to the area also. I do, I do appreciate when you guys give me the schedule.
Yeah.
Of the classes because you can, you can see when the minor classes.
I try to schedule them as early in the morning as possible. Hopefully they don't show up.
But no, we can work together.
And this was no, by no means a criticism of your current, you know, how you do things.
Oh, not a problem.
We just want to have a transparent organization that, you know, is run clean and we can keep the tradition going. However, I don't know how we're going to resolve this.
That, you know, from an individual standpoint where there is no insurance that, and even if that were provided, that's a certain level, but they're going to come after the licensee. Right now, you're not, and I'm not trying to provide any legal advice to you, but in the conversation with the city attorney, but you do have an exposure on this as a current license. As would anybody trying to apply for a license.
But shouldn't, shouldn't they take the first step and develop a 501(c) or something like that, a legal entity?
I don't know what they have that is.
Cause I don't think, listen to these guys, there really isn't any structure.
We were in the wrong place at the wrong time. I'm a volunteer for it.
And it wasn't until the call, as I went back to take a look at it historically, it's raised a question in my eyes as to who we're able to issue temporary licenses to. And just so you know, that to be able to do that is it has to be a club or charitable, religious or other nonprofit organization in existence for at least three years. I don't have any proof in the file that tells me just exactly what that is. And so I can only surmise that that was looked at at some time and whether that documentation just doesn't exist. It's raising the question potentially as to whether I'm able to legally do it if there isn't such an entity.
Right.
Already created. But then you have, then in that case where you have that nonprofit, then you've got a list of the officers that are there as part of it. So they're making an application on behalf of the nonprofits, they're the officers, then even at that, you still would likely generally prefer to have an insurance liability policy, at least providing some insulation or protection should something happen because they're going to go after anybody close at hand. You're too young to have to worry about it this kind of your life.
I don't need my wife for beer.
But that, I guess that's probably one of the things, Evan, is, you know, obviously you can work with Chief Garres over that weekend, but I think the other issues you guys need to look at is, is see if whoever, someone maybe that you know may have some paperwork or something and if you don't or not, you know, I think you want to start looking to make this thing move forward. When you two guys decide to move on, if you guys got the structure set in place, you know, then all of a sudden, you know, and I don't know what liability insurance costs for a weekend.
But if we may not be able to get to that issue.
Right.
And find that there's an appropriate entity in existence that I can issue a license to.
Right.
That's going to be the bigger question. The ability is to get insurance, I'm not concerned that they can't get that.
Right.
Pretty confident that that can occur and that's not going to break the bank in the process. It's obviously a little bit of junk out of the bottom line, but it's still better to have that protection than not.
Yes.
But my bigger concern is, is finding whether there's an appropriate entity in existence that I can issue a license to, now that's been brought to my attention.
What's the definition of a club?
They are, they are in a statute of what's allowable.
The VFW, the Legion, some of those.
All the animals, lions, elks.
Oh, yeah.
What would be, I mean, I'm like, this is all kind of over my head, but.
But you got a head, you got a face for TV.
Yeah. Like what if we would get like the, because I know what's, obviously it's a softball tournament, what if we would get like the, is there like a New Prague baseball booster club that would potentially sponsor this event? And they could apply for the liquor license and have it.
Or like an extension of the chamber.
Deb, you'd have to talk to Deb.
Or none at all. I mean, I would worry about none at all and carry on, then we would have absolutely no proceeds.
Right.
All of that and we just wouldn't, we wouldn't even be able to, it would be really hard to say, I don't know if you're 21. I don't know where you brought that, I don't know.
And then we couldn't necessarily cut anybody off when we.
Yeah, then we're able to regulate a lot more by coming to a venue where we can make sure 21-year-olds are buying.
Cause if, yeah, if somebody would come up and try to purchase a beer, we could say, no, you've had enough.
And that's happened.
Yeah.
Well, I guess if Mike can't find anything in the records of anything official, my suggestion is that, like Chuck said, form a 501(c)(3). And it's not going to cost much, from what I gather.
It's a $25 501(c)(3).
Yeah, you just have to have somebody write it up for you. And there's a guy just down the street here that's very good at 501(c)(3)'s.
Okay.
Harriet River.
And also the memorial, the, through the VFW, I'm sorry, her name escapes me now, the mother.
Oh.
Ailing.
Yes.
Caitlin, Katie, Davis.
They formed a 501(c)(3), so, you know, they could probably also answer any questions that you may have.
Right.
But it's just a nonprofit organization and that way you've got a legal entity.
You should check with the guy, like Jake Teets or something for that golf tournament. They're probably a 501(c)(3) also.
Okay.
Cause I know we were when we had the Ed Whit.
Okay.
We actually had a 501(c)(3), which, you know, IRS just wants to know that you're an organization and the funds you raise are given away as donations like to the softball fund or to the Darby Smith deal and all that stuff.
And we don't have any problem where the funds go, you know, giving you guys the money, that's not the problem.
Right. Well, no, you guys, you just kind of.
I'm on the line.
Right. And you just guys have to address what you had, you know, obviously you had some incidents last year that made you.
It's just, they're getting raver. They don't like being humiliated in front of their friends. They're just not, they're too brave for us. We're just not trying to deal with it.
But you could even look at, at Rick Teets Memorial Fund, if that is, or at least was started as a real entity, to look into that.
Yeah, maybe talk to Ruth.
Yeah, I would talk to her and just see if there was something in place at the time that, yeah, it might have, somebody might have dropped the ball, but it could be, it could have, it could be registered. somebody might have dropped the ball, but it could be, it could have, it could be registered with the state already. Okay. That you could just continue that.
Yeah.
Right.
And I don't know how long that process would take to get to become a 501(c)(3). If that would get pushed past Dozenki Days, because that's only two months old, you know. Would it, what would be our next step? Would we just say, hey, this year, everybody bring your own beer? I don't understand, like.
Well, no, I think, yeah, we, and Mike probably would have a better answer on that, but.
We can work on it.
Yeah, I think, yes. You guys, if you guys can.
The tradition, we don't want to come to any sort of enemy.
Right, but I think from your end, if you take, talk to maybe Ruth Teets or someone that might have in the know that, like I said, they might have already registered and it probably, it's probably active, but it's probably had no activity against it. Because sometimes, I think you have to file some, sometimes you have to file a return, just showing how much money you made and, you know, where the proceeds went type of thing, so that doesn't look like Jake and Adam are buying new golf clubs every, every year. Well, we know Adam, that's a different issue.
No, you don't even have to file or.
Don't you?
Tax law, no. If, but you do have to refile every year with the state to let them know that you're still an active organization. I know because I'm president of one and I didn't do it for eleven years and they got a warning saying, Mr. Dr. Brusich, you better get that filed now.
And actually, you can go out to the secretary, the miscellaneous secretary of state website and they have a link to all of the registered businesses. So you could put in, you know, the Ruth Teets, you know, whatever, to see if it existed. It could be that it is inactive, but you might be able to reactivate it.
You can reactivate it, it's a simple thing to do.
Okay.
Because Dave knows. Yeah.
And Jake, I can also help you, I'm a paralegal and I've done this in my past for years and years and years.
Yes, well, I'll use your help.
Just if you want, well, my phone number is on the city website, so just feel free to give me a call and we can maybe just walk through and see what we can find.
That'd be great, thank you.
But I really appreciate you guys bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
That you're being.
We just, we want to be transparent and we don't want it to end, those are our two main goals.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't want that on your gravestone.
No.
These two guys, let's go drink your softball tournament.
And if you know some guys that want to take it over a lot of stuff.
Well, thanks again, like I said, get in touch with Maggie, she'll help you. And then I would also continue to contact with Jim.
I'll give you this, yeah.
And then, you know, I'm sure they, like you said, if it's just a matter of getting some people to walk through there a little bit more often and stuff.
Absolutely.
Be great.
All right.
Awesome.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay, other miscellaneous. Patrick, you got anything?
Just enjoyed this week.
Okay, Mitch, you're good?
Good.
Okay. Jim, you have anything else?
Just at our next meeting, I will probably bring in our newest officer to have a sworn in also.
Okay. Cam?
Just call your attention to memo I had in the packet on a drainage inquiry at four oh five Men Cor Northwest. Property owner is not here, so I don't know if you need to go over it in any detail. But if you hadn't read it, basically it's a drainage inquiry that's gone back a little over ten years with this particular property owner. Staff's been out there a number of times, we feel that there's a, their backyard is improperly graded. There has been some private drainage corrections attempted. Basically we believe that it wasn't low enough in the ground to actually dry up some of these areas. There's a home that was being constructed to the north. And there's a stockpile of some soil there that certainly isn't helping things, but this has been going on well before that issue. But private drain line was actually put in by the developer and it was not a city thing. It was put in where this particular property owner did tie into. And Glenn Stika, the power director, is not here tonight, but he had come up with a recommendation to Mr. Gorzinski, the property owner, to basically try a sump basket in their backyard or the pump and collect some of the lower drainage and groundwater and pump that back into the private system. And one of the other options would be just regrading their backyard. Their backyard is basically nine hundred and seventy-six elevation here and maybe a couple inches lower at the back. So that's not good enough grade to keep the water flowing away, so. Just want to point out, we believe it's a private issue, we relayed that to the property owner. He submitted the letter, that was underneath our cover letter, but we've relayed this information a couple of different times. So I don't know if anybody had any particular questions about it, but again, private matter, we believe, and not treating it any differently than we had treated homeowners in Prague Estates Development probably about ten years ago now, I'm guessing, maybe not quite ten years ago, but these private drainage issues are private, not a public improvement.
Well, if he comes to a future meeting, at least we can hear him all then, so. Anything else?
Nope.
Michael?
Real quickly, on Friday, the state baseball board was in, did their final inspection of our facilities and we got thumbs up, so we're good to go. Friday was five weeks till the state tournament arrives after all these years of work and planning. The decision, the baseball guys came due, I think, in the fall of two thousand and fourteen. We started in earnest in the planning, the first construction project came in the spring of fifteen. So it's been three and a half years that we've been working on the improvements to this facility. We will host this tournament and be able to make sure we've got a good, up-to-date facility for our various age groups in the community that use that facility. So we got a thumbs up. I think the grass, I think the grass issues, I'll take them care of. They were surprised to learn of the so many pricks that we have up our sleeves as far as being able to green the grass, to use retardants on the grass and to do things that most other smaller communities can't do. And the only reason we have some of that knowledge is we've got a golf course superintendent right next door who's been a great asset to us as far as trying to improve the quality of the turf. Does a great job in the golf course and so we've taken that upon ourselves in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and now eighteen. A lot of additional work on turf restoration, both the infield and outfield, variation and all the above-ground improvements that you've seen that have been added there, all are well in check and set up to host that tournament here in five weeks.
Good.
That's one, and then I did get an email, I don't even had a chance to talk to the employee, but I think it's worth passing on to you, is this weekend, the branch manager of the Wells Fargo Bank mentioned, you all know Dan Bishop, who's the financial advisor, houses out of there, that he shared with her that the bank encounters some water issues on Saturday. And he, he was guessing that their sprinklers were malfunctioning and she was attempting to shut them off, but the water kept running and it started to build up in the basement of the bank. She had placed calls to their corporate properties for assistance, but she was waiting for help and it just happened that Craig Novotny with the city happened to stop in and he saw all the water running outside and asked if he could help. And he was able to go in, locate the shut-off to the sprinkler system, which really helped eliminate the amount of basement flooding that occurred in the bank. So I haven't even had a chance to talk to Craig, but I'm gonna make sure that he gets recognized this next week when the utilities commission meets and just to acknowledge that that was a lifesaver for the bank. So I appreciate that kind of employee recognition and it's a great thing. Otherwise, that's really all I have.
Okay. Sean, you have anything?
Nope.
David?
No, just a question for Mike. Where can we recycle fluorescent bulbs, dunes?
Residential?
Yeah.
Right down here. The front color.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Maggie?
Nothing.
I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're out of here, thank you everyone.